We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is July 17, 2025. We apologize for running a little bit behind. We had a longer committee meeting, so we needed to give council an opportunity to get prepared for our legislative work session. So we'll have our invocation by Emily Hardaway, Community Management- Communications Manager of Community Relations for the City of Douglasville. And after that, we'll have the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem. Please stand for the invocation.
All right. Let's pray. Lord, thank you so much for this day you've given us. I ask that you please be with our mayor and council this evening as they hear business pertaining to our city, Lord, and please give them wisdom and discernment to lead our city well. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Ms. Hardaway, we really appreciate you during the invocation. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council's Legislative Work Session. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only, and no official action will be taken this evening. Official action will be taken on these items that we discuss tonight on Monday at 6:00 PM unless those items are tabled. If your business that you're here for is not listed as the- as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. There are just a few protocol items I'd like to go over to make certain that we're all on the same page as we go into this meeting, so I ask that you would please listen closely so that we'll all know how to conduct ourselves this evening. I ask that you would please keep your comments on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the Chair if you deviate from this requirement. A second deviation will result in us asking you to leave the premises. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud, react to speakers, speak from the audience, cheer, carry on conversations. When you're at the podium, please address all of your concerns and comments to myself, council members, or the person who is chairing that particular committee. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments. There are required public hearings. And if you have any printed material, I ask that you please give that to our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Candace. She will make copies and disseminate those copies to myself and council members. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, I ask that you please put those in silent mode so they will not be disruptive. And this is how things will happen when you come to the podium. The agenda items will be handled in the following manner. Before if you ask him- before asking you to come to the podium, the committee chairperson will read the agenda item. Then that person or applicant will make his or her presentation. There will be maybe questions from myself and council members. All right now, turn the light. Let there be light. You gotta stand up or something. Come on, Chief. Walk through here. I think you're gonna turn the lights on. Reverend Doctor, that didn't work. Okay, okay. So anyway, we'll have electrician. Come on now, Pastor. You got the touch, Pastor Rogers? Well, we just keep it moving. We'll keep it moving. So myself and council members are possibly asked clarifying questions to help us make a determination for our vote next Monday. After the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience, there is a maximum of 20 minutes for those that are speaking in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those speaking in opposition. Each person have five- has five minutes to talk to us about the item unless there's a group of people and more than four or five people have to speak. We ask that you would divvy up your time so that everyone has an opportunity to speak, and maybe it's three minutes or so. But in totality, it's 20 minutes for those in favor of the item, 20 minutes for those in opposition, unless the chairperson opts to extend the time of that particular committee. Prior to coming to the podium, we ask that you would fill out a speaker card. On that speaker card, it will ask for your name and address for the record. Praise Him. Name and address for the record, and then you can say whether you're for- if you're in favor or if you're in opposition of that particular item. Once you fill out your speaker card, you'll give that to Ms. Candace, and she will put it into the record. So hopefully, we're all on the same page. This is not a question-and-answer format. We're not debating going back and forth. We're here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions next week. So hopefully, everyone's on the same page. If the agenda item is not covered on the- on the board where you see the agenda or on the piece of paper that are outside, the papers that are outside, you can certainly come up under Citizens for Delegation, Citizens and Delegation comments at the end, and you'll have five minutes to talk to us about any business to remain to the city. So we do have paper Agenda Items, Agenda worksheets, if you want to take one from outside, or you can follow us on the screen behind me. So we'll move on now. We are at item number four, which is Announcements and Presentations. We're moving on to item number five, which is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Six is Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under Finance.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Housing and Community Affairs chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business for the Housing and Community Affairs Committee.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have- we have one item tonight under Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee.
Yes, sir.
That is to adopt a resolution authorizing the City of Douglasville's participation in an amicus brief in Chang versus City of Milton appeal pending before the Georgia Supreme Court.
Okay.
That's big stuff.
Big stuff.
Ms. Miranda Jordan will fill us in on the legalities.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Council. Miranda Jordan, Staff Attorney, 6695 Church Street. This was a quick turnaround request by the attorneys that are representing the City of Milton. Previously, they have communicated with the City of Douglasville and other cities regarding participation in what's called an amicus brief that will be filed with the Georgia Supreme Court supporting the appeal that has taken place regarding the lawsuit that was won against the City of Milton for $35 million approximately. And this brief that will be prepared and submitted next week, if approved by the City of Douglasville, will include our name.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Just to remind folks, the nature of this case was a unfortunate accident in which somebody ran into a- what was it? A monument or a planter of some sort that was within- within the right-of-way in the City of Milton. They sued the City of Milton, won the initial several rounds of the case for, what you said, $35 million, even though in- in our opinion, the City of Milton should not have been held liable for this because it was simply a mi- it was a- it was a planter that had been there for many years, not put in- not even, I don't think it wasn't even installed by the City of Milton. It was simply- it was on private property. Am I correct in that?
It was installed privately, but it was on city property.
On- okay. But the city did not, yeah. So the city is being held liable for this, and that's why we're participating at the sort of the cheerleader section, I guess, in legal- in legal terms. So, for the city. So, okay. Any comments or questions from anyone?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and Attorney Jordan. We appreciate Attorney Dotson, the explanation of the merit of this case and having signed on as a city amicus, meaning amicable, and the rest of the cities that will sign on to support the City of Milton, because if it goes through, then it will expose all cities to anything that's on our right-of-ways. And for example, in our committee meetings, we were talking about the Douglasville sign that would be erected on the northern part of the city. And Mr. Dotson advised us to, we can move forward with plans, with all of that, but not to construct the sign until this case has been heard and settled, because if someone were to have an unfortunate accident and hit the sign, then the city would be liable. So it's falling in suit also for us saying that we didn't want to consider at that time the bus terminals that the county wanted to bring forward, the bus stations. I don't know what those-
The waiting stands.
Shelters.
The shelters. Thank you. Because again, whatever's in the city's right-of-way, if it stands, if this case goes forward to the Georgia Supreme Court and they win, anything in our right-of-way, if someone has an accident, they can sue the city because it's in our right-of-way. So that's why we're contesting what the- the initial outcome was, because this monument or this planter had been there since 1992. The city wasn't even the City of Milton yet, but it would expose all cities to be- to be sued based on that premise. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Watts, did you hear something?
So this is just the City of Douglasville saying, "Yeah, Milton, we agree with you." Doesn't benefit in any way other than adding weight behind their appeal to the Supreme Court.
It doesn't- it doesn't expose us to any danger or liability or anything. We're just gonna be-
I mean, I knew that. I just wanted the citizens to hear that.
And to put things in perspective, if I remember correctly, the $35 million was- that's pretty much the entire annual budget for Milton, pretty close to it. So, yeah.
I mean, to- to Mr. Dotson's point, in the committee meetings, the sign that we're talking about putting as an entry sign coming into the city from Pauling County, we're gonna not actually do anything until this is worked out.
Correct.
Put us in. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
And just to add, there are approximately over 100 other cities that would be joining in this amicus brief as well.
Just in the state of Georgia, or do- can cities from outside Georgia also join in?
Because it relates to Georgia law specifically, they're just cities in the state of Georgia.
But still a lot of cities in one state. Thank you.
And it makes a difference. We- we helped the City of Stockbridge with Eagles Landing in how they went to the legislators and had cities sign on as amicus brief to help them with their case once this- when Eagles Landing tried to, I guess, succeed from the City of Stockbridge. So it helped that city as well. So it does help to have other cities to support you when you have legislative measures that can affect all the cities in the state.
Well, we've already discussed, I mean, this is- lawsuits run amok. And I think this is- it's not just a matter of, you know, when you say it's the city's money, it's your money. It's the citizen's money. And so, in a sense, we'd all be having- be held liable for something that really is beyond our control. So, Madam Mayor, City Council, if it's at your pleasure, we'd like to put this item under the consent agenda for Monday?
It looks good.
This looks like we have the consensus, Madam Mayor. That's all we have under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem, and to our legal eagles. We appreciate you covering this issue. Personnel and Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item this evening.
You're welcome.
Item number 25-277, Adopt an Ordinance to Amend Section 17-4 of the Personnel Policies and Procedures Ordinance of the City of Douglasville to revise provisions related to off-duty use of city-owned vehicles to provide for applicability and to repeal conflicting ordinances. As we discussed in the committee meeting, this is basically a housekeeping issue, but we will refer over to Ms. Hampton in case she has anything new to add.
I do not. Just to clarify, currently, the policy does not reflect how we currently operate with our take-home vehicles, and this would make certain that how we operate is aligned in policy.
Very good. Considering that, if there is no objection, I would like to have this placed on the consent agenda for Monday. I don't see any, so-
It looks good.
There we go. And that's all we have for Personnel and Organization this evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Estes and City Manager, for helping us with that item. We'll move on then to item number 10, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Y'all bear with me. I have a whole new binder. We're gonna get through this. Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the Planning and Development Committee meeting to order. This evening, some of the items on our agenda will require a public hearing. Before we begin those items, I'd like to briefly review the procedures we will follow to ensure an orderly and fair process. These hearings are conducted in accordance with Georgia's Zoning Procedures Act. As elected officials, it is our responsibility to ensure that all applications are reviewed fairly and partially and in accordance with the city's zoning ordinances and adopted land use policies. For each zoning item requiring a public hearing, we will begin with a presentation from the city staff outlining the requests and any relevant findings. The applicant will then have an opportunity to speak. Following those presentations, the mayor and council may ask questions of both staff and the applicant. After that, we will open the floor for public comment. If you would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the application, please complete a comment card before approaching the podium. Comment cards are located near the entrance of the room and should be submitted to the city clerk before your turn to speak. Please include your name, address, and the item you wish to address, if possible, any specific questions you would like staff to follow up on. All comments should be made respectfully and directed to the chair. When you speak, please begin by stating your name and address for the record. If you ask questions, please understand that we will not respond immediately during the public comment portion. Instead, staff will attempt to address all questions at once before the close of the public comment, provided that information is readily available. Each speaker will be allowed to speak up to five minutes. We will allocate a total of 20 minutes for comments in support and 20 minutes for those in opposition. This is not a debate. Interruptions, outbursts, and disruptions will not be permitted. There's a general public comment period at the end of the meeting tonight, but the city council cannot hear additional public comments during the general public comment portion for specific zoning items where the public hearing has already taken place for that zoning item. The mayor will cut off any public comment that refers back to specific zoning items. As a reminder, the mayor has requested that there be no applause or other demonstrations during the meeting. Please ensure that all electronic devices have been silenced, and anyone who disrupts the proceedings will be asked to leave. With that, we will now begin. Our first item is item 25-286. Says, "Consider a request for final repla approval to establish the as-built locations of the town home buildings for lots 5 through 9 and lots 72 through 76 of Laurelwood Phase 2 for 12.018 acres at 5059 Reservoir Drive and landlots 23, District 24." I'm so sorry. "And landlots 23 and 24, District 1, Section 5, parcel..." Can I just not read anymore? I'm sorry, y'all. "Application by F.R. Arbor Place, LLC, Greg Hasty, and Mr. James Gordon is going to go over this item with us."
Good evening, council. James Gordon, 6695 Church Street.
You trying to get it up, Mr. Gordon?
I'm-
That's the next item.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The- oh, I was gonna say, I think I saw it down at the bottom. Okay. All right. Well, we'll talk through this one. No problem. This is sim- this is similar to as we've done previously. This is as-built locations of the lots 5 through 9 and 72 through 76. Lot 5 through 9 are located toward the front of the property by the pool, and lots 72 through 76 are located toward the rear of the property, back in the corner.
Mm-hmm.
So with this, this allows the developers to go to closing and finish out, get all his legalities in order.
Okay.
So with that, do you have any questions on this property?
Um, how- I know you said this is Phase 2. Is this the last phase of the development? I let you talk about this often, and then I think I forget.
This is the last phase of the property, but these are not the last buildings.
Right, yeah. I think there's a couple more.
There's still another building to be completed in the- in the rear portion, in that back corner. There's one back there. There's one right next to the office. And then there's four buildings on the other side of the pool.
Okay.
So we still have approximately six more buildings to go.
Right. And I think those have been selling really well. Okay, has-
Yes.
From- from your end, has everything been going well? Have there been any issues?
No, no issues with these. They have been reaching all their closeouts and their COs, and they've been approved.
Wonderful. Thank you. Council, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, you have a question?
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Gordon, for the presentation. I'm sorry that citizens can't see, but they- we do have them on our iPads. So in totality, there are 72 townhomes?
Yeah, and I think it's over 200 units. It's a lot of units.
So it's 200 townhomes in total?
Not that many buildings.
Not that many buildings, but the actual-
Yeah, 'cause there's like six or seven per building.
Mm-hmm.
Some of them only have four or five per building.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you have a total number of how many townhomes?
Um, no, I don't have that in front of me.
You don't have a total number. And the last six that's not within this phase are just accessory?
No, those are just buildings. There's more buildings to come.
But not more townhomes?
Yeah. These are all- all townhomes. We have- this is not the last that you will be seeing this development. There's still more buildings to come that need to be constructed and completed. Four of them are generally around the- the pool area.
Mm-hmm.
There's four large buildings there that have six or seven units in each one.
The way he describes, each building has six units together. That's one- constitutes one building.
Right.
Yeah.
And so how many buildings are there?
Probably-
That's the part I was saying. I had that in front of me.
You don't know.
We will have answers for you all on Monday to give you the total number of units for the entire development. We can get that.
It's probably about 30 or so, it looks like.
Yeah, I'd say approximately, like, 35, 40, maybe, something like that.
Okay, with six townhomes in each building. And this is near the mall. I've seen a very nice. I've driven through there. And do we know the price point? I know they're selling like hotcakes, though.
I think those were like mid to-
They're in the low 300s.
Low 300s.
Yeah, they go from 300 to about 340.
Yeah.
And the amenities, it's pool and-
Yeah, they have a pool, walking trails, and they have a dog park.
Okay. I was just wondering, 'cause you said this was the last phase, but then you said we got another phase.
No, no, not a phase. We're still building out Phase 2.
Okay.
We have not finished building all the units in Phase 2.
Okay.
It's the last fa- there's not gonna be a Phase 3, but Phase 2 has not been fully constructed.
So you're gonna come back to us with a phase-
Yes, I'll be coming back several more times.
Phase 2, A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Boom, shakalaka, I got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, any other questions or comments of Mr. Gordon? No. Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Gordon. I didn't have any more questions on this item. Council, are you guys okay with placing this on the consent agenda? Thank you. I Our next item is item 25-217. Says, "Tabled from June 2 to hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from R.A. Residential Agricultural County to R2 Single Family Residential Detached District City to PUD Planned Unit Development District City for 21.24 acres located on Malone Road and Land Lot 646, District 18, Section 2, parcel IDs 0001, 0002, 0003, and Land Lot 647, District 18, Section 2, parcel IDs 0001, 0002, and Land Lot 703, District 1, Section 3, parcel ID 0006. Application by the Malphorus Group and care of Mason Malphorus." And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dana Gray, 6695. This is a proposal for rezoning of R2, which is in the city, and R-A, which is in the county, to PUD, and this is located on Malone Road. The applicant initially presented this proposal for 181 units on June 2. They have provided a revised site plan showing a reduction to 169 units. 150 of- 54 of those are townhomes, and they're proposing 15 triplexes. They have also added a 25-foot buffer around the periphery of the site. The townhomes that were facing Malone Road are set back further to allow an amenity area and detention pond along with a mail kiosk. And they are also requesting an annexation of four parcels.
Thanks, Mr. Gray. I'm making sure I'm getting this right. Okay.
And I do have- staff is proposing, with approval of a community development director and city engineer, planting trees of perhaps evergreens, but we can talk to them about what's already there, if that would provide a strong buffer between the properties. But that will be up for discussing with the applicant.
Okay. And then, was there a fence in that buffer?
No.
Okay. That might be something to address. I don't know. Before we go on, council-
And applicant is here.
Okay, yeah. Council, do you guys have questions of Mr. Gray? Madam Mayor?
I do. I don't want to jump before Dr. Burr Danley. I did have a couple of questions, Mr. Gray. Thank you for the presentation. So it's a reduction of only 12 units?
Yes.
Um, okay. And the triplexes have not been reduced at all?
That was reduced from 18 to 15.
18, so three triplexes and then nine townhomes.
Uh, that would-
'Cause there's a reduction of 12. You said 169. They started after 181.
Right. 169 is 181. I can usually do math faster than this. I think it's 12 or 13.
Okay. So I know I was out of town, but I watched the council meeting for this and coming back. There was a concern. I think you said something about trees and a buffer, but the egress or for emergencies into Hunter's Ridge.
Right.
Was that even addressed in this updated petition?
They still have the same proposal for that, just to be used for emergency access only by the fire. So residents from either side would not be able to traverse through that- that area.
Okay. But does a homeowners association, since they're there currently, and this is a new development coming in, do they have the right to say yes or no for their homeowners association and the people that live in Hunter's Ridge?
I do believe it's a public street, so-
It's a public street?
Yeah.
Okay. That is that. And then, hm, I guess the concern, like, there- we just talked about the one item previously before this one, and there is, you know, a lot of townhomes, but there isn't a community already there. It's commercial. You know, it's by the mall. Arbor Station is down- down the road, and it's fenced in, and it's own subdivision. But this community is kind of backing into an existing residential area.
Yes.
So just have some concerns about the density. And the reduction doesn't seem like a huge reduction based on the comments that the community had previously before it was tabled. So just wondering what that yield was and were- no detachments? 'Cause this is a detached- Hunter's Ridge is a detached homes. They're not townhomes.
Single-family homes.
Yeah, they're single-family homes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Just a little bit concerned about the density and all those-
I think these may be questions for the applicant.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I apologize, Mr. Gray.
No, no. They did meet with the community again, 'cause Joe- not Joe, but they did meet with the community.
Okay.
They- they tabled it to address and make contact with the community as well. So recently, they met with the community again, so, yeah.
So some concessions, you think, are- have these- these are the concessions?
Um, from the original meeting, yes, but there could be more from the meeting that they had individually with the community.
Okay. Well, I'll wait for the applicant then. I'll yield whatever else I have to ask until they present.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, they are. Would the developer like to come on down? Yeah, they are. Would the developer like to come on down and go over this with us, please?
Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see y'all.
Good evening.
Mason Malfris, uh, fifty Judge Island Drive in Beaufort, South Carolina. Um, I'll be representing the Malfris Group, um, today. Is this how I click back and forth on this? Perfect, okay. Uh, just making sure. Uh, but anyway, the Malfris Group is a, uh, family-owned development group, uh, based out of South Carolina that specializes in, in great communities. Um, so, I, I just want to talk to you today, obviously, Mr. Dana did a great job, so I don't want to regurgitate all that he, uh, all that he said and everything about the site, as well as y'all are familiar with it. Um, I do want to talk a little bit about the, a little bit of the context, um, around the site too, as well as it's, you know, the nature of it. Being a hundred and sixty-nine units of fee simple, uh, single-family townhomes. Um, then some kind of different chatter about what they are, but that's what they are. They're for sale, um, townhomes. Um, and, and kind of to step back, we have, obviously, we have, um, some land in the county, some land in the city. Um, and just kind of wanted to run through the comp plan as we saw them, so you can kind of get in our head of kind of driving the design here and, um, the density. When we go through the, um, the comp plans for the county first, I'll just lightly hit that, that, um, the future land use is urban residential, um, which contemplates townhomes and triplexes. Um, in their comprehensive plan, they, they, in this character area specifically, um, you know, they named the, the need for more accommodations for residents with, um, different housing needs. Um, as far as the city goes, the comprehensive plan, um, medium-density residential, um, we believe we meet. Um, also to kind of hit on a couple of those things, is we're, you know, we've been going at this a pretty good while. And so, we're very familiar with the comprehensive plan of both the county and the city. Um, and, you know, things that we read through there is, you know, promoting, um, promoting a diverse, uh, group of housing. You know, different missing middle housing, um, not just, uh, large lots, single-family detached, but also, um, and not just apartments, but this, this, uh, missing middle here. Um, and that we see that it, it, it meets the comp plan. Um, other, other comments from there is promoting infill development and division of existing lots. Uh, that's something we feel we've, we've really done here by having six parcels that we've went and, um, got together um, to create what we think is just a, a great community. Um, I won't hit on everything, uh, again, but, you know, with it being, um, that density, but we, we are hitting, um, thirty percent open space, which is, um, you know, more than a lot of municipalities' requests. Um, and we're doing that in, you know, active and passive open space. Um, so, like I say, just feel like we've, we've looked at the comp plan and, and we've utilized, um, these kind of, you know, what y'all mentioned in the comprehensive plan, some of the underutilized lots, um, to bring, uh, housing that is needed with such a strong job market, um, here in Atlanta, something that, um, we believe is, is really needed. Um, so, but I'll kind of jump to the changes that we made. You were asking more about the concessions that we made.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, yes, we did make a, about a six and a half percent reduction in units. Um, but really, through our community meetings, um, the city council hearings, and, um, the community did a great job of listing the items of grievances. Uh, so, we were able to really attack those and I feel that we did. Um, we added this additional buffer around, um, that was not required. Uh, this will be a little bit of talk about kind of what that was, and Dana touched on it a little bit, but try to maintain tree save on that as much as possible, uh, but where, where it needs to be supplemented, um, some landscaping to create that buffer. Uh, but to maintain a, a natural feel in that area. Um, on top of that buffer, you can see there was, um, some concerns with retention and how, um, the runoff of this would affect, um, the neighborhood, so, uh, we looked deeper at retention, added retention, um, and specifically up there near Hunter's Ridge in that northeast corner. Um, also brings back those new homes from the existing community that's there, adds a little bit of additional buffer. Um, same down here on Malone Road. We heard some comments about, um, the character of Malone Road, uh, maintaining that. And so, uh, we, we made a really, a, a big change in, in, uh, distance of those new homes to Malone Road, um, as well as adding more amenity area, um, for active and passive recreation. That's where our many, amenity area will go, right there as well. Um, but then also addressing more retention and, um, and, and adding more there. Um, I did want to talk about the emergency access with the locked gate. Um, I think in the first meeting, um, there was some misconception about what that was. Uh, but it is an emergency access, um, that will be utilized, uh, only in emergencies and it will be locked. Um, other things we did to try to remedy, um, some of the, the concerns there, in addition with the locked gate, was, um, we looked at some low-impact designs of leaving, um, our streets and going into Holburn. Um, we told with the fire department about, um, maybe how that looks as far as potentially structured soils, um, or just some kind of, uh, pervious surface that is not going to invite anybody to attempt to drive it, et cetera. It doesn't look like a driveway. It's going to look essentially, uh, natural right in there, but be up to code, um, to meet all of their standards. Um, and, and I would say too, I, I think that as much as this is a requirement from the city, um, I can just absolutely see the, um, the amenity that this applies, not only to our development, but also Hunter's Ridge as an area that is a, really a large, um, you know, development with only one, you know, ingress, egress. This, uh, gives another option that we know, uh, could save a life, absolutely. Um, so, those are the changes that we made. We felt like they were very meaningful changes, uh, very pointed to, um, the community's needs. Um, and it, the other one I would, I would also add to this too, is just kind of what the housing is, and I touched on that a little bit. I did want to throw up a image of what this product looks like, um, how it's being utilized, um, in metro Atlanta. Um, we think it's a, it's a, it's a really, it's a pretty product. Um, it fits a, a great need, um, that I would say the country needs. Um, and especially in an area with so much, uh, economic development that y'all are experiencing with, um, you know, with all the job growth, and also just listed out in y'all's comp plan, um, multiple times about this need for this type of housing. Um, and not only that, but we believe that the, being able to capture those properties, design this holistically for this, um, this site allows it to be a great project, um, that will be a catalyst for, um, future growth in this area as far as, uh, business growth that we know is needed and know is talked about heavily from the community. Um, we know we've, we've, we've experienced it, um, that this is, this is a catalyst to, to good growth in a community. Um, so, I say all that to say, I really appreciate y'all's time, I appreciate the process, and, um, happy to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Malfris. Yes, um, I do have a couple of questions for you right quick before we move down the road. Um, when you mentioned this gate that will be locked and only first responders will be able to use it, what type of locking mechanism is that?
That's a good question that my engineer maybe could, um, could answer a little bit better than I could, and I can call them up to answer that. Um, but it will be complying with however the emergency, um, facilities need, whatever they would, would require and what works for them.
Okay, so, whether it be, I'm sure like a keypad or something, I, I just would, I was curious of what that looks like. I would like to talk about it before we get down the road to start making decisions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and then, I know before you guys left that meeting on June second, we asked of you all to have that community meeting. And I know that you guys did recently have that. When did you have that meeting?
Yeah, so, we had, we had some contact with, um, through some of our representation, uh, right away with, um, the head of the HOA there at Hunter's Ridge. Um, and then we yesterday met with the, um, with the community again to go over exactly what you're seeing here, is exactly what we went over with them yesterday.
Okay, and was, did you feel like that meeting was well-attended?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay, so I know that you're going to take that information to heart, okay. Um, when we talk about the buffer, I didn't see anywhere of a fence being mentioned. Is that something that you guys would be open to adding?
Um, I think we would be open to adding it. I think in, in our eyes, we would, we would rather achieve that with natural vegetation, um, where, where we can create a, a buffer that doesn't look like a fence, but looks like, um, wooded area.
Right, so maybe like an opaque fence or something, though. I think that might be something that could give a little consideration. Um, and then, when I'm looking at the renderings up at the, up at the top, I see renderings that look like a one-car garage, but then down at the bottom shows a two-car garage. So, is there going to be like a mix?
Which one has the two?
Well, when I'm looking on page thirty-six and?
Six?
Yep, thirty-five and thirty-six of my presentation on the iPad shows, um, three bedrooms, uh, at eighteen hundred square foot, four bedrooms at, excuse me, uh, also at eighteen hundred square foot. Both of these are two-car garage units.
Dialin', Dialin' and Je- and Jefferson models?
Yes, those are, um, those must not have been switched with the, with the, um, new plans that we submitted. Those are, I believe, twenty-four-foot units.
Okay, so then now you're looking at one-car gar- garage?
Yes, one-car garage, yes.
Oh, okay. And then, um, also with the amenities, where it just mentioned, um, amenities. Have we gotten down the road any further with what those might look like?
Yeah, the, these will be, um, like in the previous, um, drawing, there'll, it'll be a, you know, clubhouse and a pool. Um, and then some, some active, uh, space beyond that, um, behind here.
Okay, so then with the clubhouse and the pool comes an HOA, so have y'all considered a rental cap?
Um, it's not something that has been brought up to us at this time.
But you would consider it?
Yes, we would consider it.
Okay. Um, that's all the questions I have for you at this time. I can't promise that I won't think of more. Okay, do you have any questions? Okay, Coach, we're just gonna go to the, Madam Mayor?
You know I do.
I know you do.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation. Mumfree, is that how you pronounce it?
Malfris.
Malfris.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a unique name, it's nice. Um, I did have a couple of questions, so, the adjusted, um, presentation is what you're giving to us today that you talked to the community about, so there is no more, you know, I had a concern with, um, the density. So, you're saying that the one sixty-nine is the, is the new revised, uh, presentation?
Yes, ma'am, this is the, this is the revision, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, and you mentioned that you did look over the comprehensive plan for the city and the county
Yes, ma'am.
and that the county said urban residential. And, so why didn't you stay in the county if it's urban residential and the city is medium residential? Because for us, this is not medium, this is kind of heavy residential. But, um, so if you have urban residential in the county, in a city and county, and the majority of the land is in the county, why would you opt to come into the city?
Yes, ma'am, so, um, when we looked at it, um, with, looking at it as a, as a whole, um, it looks like, you know, it, that piece up there in the northeast corner is kind of an island, um, back there. And so, um, with, with our frontage being in the city and, um, the back and the, um, excuse me, but the, uh, the zoning being PUD, um, around it in the city, we felt that that was a better fit for us to go to a PUD zoning as, um, that's what was being contemplated in the city around it.
Okay, so you couldn't accomplish what you wanted in the county, based on your development? No?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we, we started down the path with the city. We felt that the city was the best fit for us. We did not go down the pass, path with the county to de-annex, if that's what you're speaking to. We, we didn't go down any kind of, um, path to de-annex from the city, um, the par- the parcels that are, we di- we didn't explore that, no.
So, I, I guess I'm speaking of not de-annexing, but just really just staying in the county and developing in the county and, um, looking at their density for urban residential and coming out on Huey Road or whatever road is connected in the county, rather than coming into the city, because that would give you more of a buffer for Hunter's Ridge if you didn't develop in the city at all, just stayed in the county. Just a question, just a question.
Yes, ma'am, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm following you perfectly. If we were to just develop the county parcel,
Mm-hmm.
um, yeah, I'm not sure I'm following you perfectly. It would be, it would be, um, our access.
It'd be less dense, and, and I guess that's the concern, the, the main concern that I have. Now, I will say to you, um, that you, you mentioned about metro Atlanta, and I understand in the metro area, and we're part of the metro, but just looking at what is needed in Douglasville to see the needs for our community, and especially in this corridor. We do have a wonderful community, Avalon Community, at the top of Malone Road that is multi-use housing. It has townhomes and condos, and so, but the rest of the corridor is really, um, residential R-two and such, and so it really, it is a multi-family. So, we would be sandwiching a community in for the top of Malone and ninety-two to Malone and Huey in that area with, sandwiching in with two highly, uh, developed and dense communities with no infrastructure or traffic in the roads, so that, that's a concern that I have. Um, and then the thirty percent open space, it would just be, and, and thank you for doing that, thirty percent. But it would just be a pool for active and, and passive recreational, is a pool and a clubhouse.
Um, for the, for the active amenity, what we would, you know, what we would typically say is the amenity, but we know we absolutely have more open space, um, and park area that would, that we would also consider to be amenity, um, really spread out throughout. Um, we've got a dog park, uh, two dog parks, I believe, so, yeah.
Okay, so a dog part als- dog park also. And the rental cap that, uh, the chairwoman asked about is something that we wrote, we have put that, um, recommendation on other developments that have not in this area, but, um, there are apartments that are just newly built on ninety-two. But I think in, in Tributary Riverside Parkway and some other areas in the city, because, uh, legislation has come across in the state of Georgia for homes for rent. There are some subdivisions that are built and the majority of some, a lot of lots are being sold to, you know, America's Home for Rent. So, legislation in the state has said something about capping rentals, because, you know, I mean, you wouldn't understand someone who is buying in the community and you have a lot of turnover for rental. So, we really would love for you to consider that, if this were to pass, is to have a cap on rentals so that you don't have a lot of people that are coming in and out and turning over in the community for stability of the community. Um, I think that's all I had at this time. I'm not, not certain about the tree buffers. I know with the fire chief, Dr. Allen is here, he could really speak to the rec- uh, requirements for having that emergency, um, entrance that's at Hunter's Ridge. And again, Hunter's Ridge is, is dense already, and, um, one way in and one way out is kind of, and a lot of these, uh, cul-de-sacs is, is, I'm not sure how safe that is, coming in one way and coming out one way with a hundred and sixty-nine units on top of the homes in, in Hunter's Ridge. That's a lot of, uh, a lot of people, a lot of traffic, a lot of everything. But thank you for your presentation, I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Percham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, trying to figure where, which part of the elephant to take a bite at first. Everybody knows that I'm a, a major, probably one of the biggest advocates for density around here. I think density done right can really add a lot of positive, positive growth to the community. I mean, we, we've all, especially me, have gotten up on our soapbox and talked about how Douglasville, we know is going to grow. That's a fact. We're twenty minutes from the world's busiest airport, we're going to grow. So, the important thing is we have, we take control of that growth, and that, the quality of the growth is what we pay attention to and how we grow. I guess we'll have to have a, a, a professional difference of opinion over what constitutes good-looking product. Because that's not a good-looking product, in my opinion, but the density that you hear, you have here, it, it looks like density for the sake of density. I would echo what the Ma- Madam Mayor has said about having this many units all exiting at one point. I know we have traffic studies, okay, that show blah, 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 blah. These traffic studies aren't worth the paper they're printed on, frankly. No traffic study I've ever seen is worth the paper it's printed on. Because now, they never take. Because now, they never take into account cumulative traffic. Each, each neighborhood, each development adds another one, two percent. They don't take into account the last six developments that occurred prior to that. So traffic, the traffic study doesn't mean anything. You've got a lot of units coming out onto, onto Malone Road in one spot, without any consideration of giving a second entrance to this, other than through an existing neighborhood, which is not welcoming that entrance. The really, I mean, the, you went from one cul-de-sac to four cul-de-sacs. Four times the fun. As an urban planner, you, you, the, one of the most important things you have to take into con- into account is context. That, that's one of the first things you, first principles you learn in urban planning. And you're, you've, again, to echo a very important point that the mayor made, and has been made previously, you, you've got an entire section of the city that has a, a certain level of density to it, that this contrasts dramatically with. It is, it takes no account of the context around it. Whether or not you have buffers or not, that doesn't, that doesn't, doesn't mean a thing. It doesn't, it, there's, it doesn't seem to be th- any attempt to make a neighborhood that reflects the existing community that it's being built within. That's, that's a terrible loss here, a, a lost opportunity. I mean, I wanna see density, I wanna see development that creates community and connectivity, as Madam Chair talked about earlier. And I don't see that, I don't even see an e- effort made at, at connectivity to the rest of, of this, to the rest of the city in this development. I mean, you got a couple of dog parks, great, dogs will be happy. But I just, I find this a very disappointing development. I'll leave it at that for now, Madam, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilman Esses?
Uh, no, I'm gonna yield to Councilwoman Burden.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Burden, Emily.
Yes, thank you, um, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for your presentation. I am, um, council member that serves in this ward, um, Ward Three. And I just wanna say, while I understand the need for additional housing in our community, I cannot support the development, um, that compromised the safety, peace, and the integrity of an established neighborhood, routing emergency vehicles through an existing subdivision is not sustainable, it's not respectful, um, in the solution for our current residents. The proposed development may bring more homes, and we do know that we need more rooftops. But the risk of creating long-term traffic safety and quality of life concerns of families who have invested in this area, growth should never come at an expense of our existing neighborhoods. As a leader, I've had the responsibility to balance growth with the protection of our community's character. I cannot agree with the plan that prioritized expansions over the well-being and voice of our current residents. We must ask ourselves, are we building for progress? Are we satisfying the stability of our neighborhoods in the name of progress? I cannot support the development as proposed because it erodes trust and disrupts the fabric of our existing community. Growth is necessary, but not at any cost. A development that forces emergency vehicles access through an established subdivision disregards the rights and safety of those already living there. And, um, I appreciate you meeting with the residents. Um, I wish I had been, uh, part of it. I wasn't given a notice and you all met yesterday, but the residents, um, not undermining their intelligence. And, um, we, I have seen development, um, that we have in, in this area where there's a county street on one side and a city street on the other side. And that is very difficult for our emergency residents. So, um, and as far as cul-de-sacs, I, I won't make a comment, I was, thank you, Mayor Protem, for not taking all the time. But I just wanted to say, um, thank you for your efforts, and, um, this may seem hard, but we are going to, we are going to grow. But it is going to be smart growth and, and the right way that we have to do it. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I was going to point out to you before we move along that in the renderings that we have right now, there's the top that has about five photographs that show the single-car garages.
Yes.
And then down at the bottom, it shows some old renderings from, uh, the June second round of council meetings, and they are completely different looking. Um, the ones that we have right here are, there's a little bit of stone on one of them, but it lacks character, and, um, having this much density in a neighborhood like this, it really would concern me to have a one-car garage, because the cars that can't fit in the garage are going to end up on the streets, and you're already very dense. So that's something that's, of course, going to be concerning for me. Um, and I think that's all I have. Did you have anything after this, your minute? Okay, great. Um, if you guys are good with it, then let's go ahead and move on to that public hearing.
Thank you.
Um, thank you so much. Folks, I'll remind you that we have twenty minutes for those who want to speak in four of those items. If you have your comment cards, you can take them to the city clerk and then give your name and address for the record. And if we don't have anyone who wants to speak in favor of this item, then we will go ahead and move on to that second portion of the public hearing. We will allow twenty minutes for those who would like to speak in opposition of this item, and that is also with a five-minute limit per person. Um, and just please remember to, to be kind. Ms. Candace, can you start that for me? Thank you so very much.
Good evening.
Good evening, Pastor Rogers.
Madam Chair, Council, Dr. Chief Police, Gary Sparks, City Manager, thanks for everything y'all are doing here in Douglas County. And thank you for recognizing the difference between what we have and what was being presented to build. As we look around, we saw four different neighborhoods that are all R-two and residential. And I sent an email out, and everybody knows what I said there, but I'm, I'm not talking about this, I wanna just share some things that we've experienced in the past ten years about corporate buying properties. In Hunter's Ridge, we have two-hundred-and-eighty-seven homes, and sixty percent of that is owned by corporations. That has brought an element to our subdivision to where a homeowner, uh, and a renter have one, I can give you this example, what is the difference between a four-wheel drive and a rent-a-car? You can return the rent-a-car with no, you know, you're gonna get a little insurance on it, you can tear it up, you can do whatever you want to, there's no investment there, there's nothing there. And with that, it brings the element of crime. And it has truly brought the element, just in our neighborhood alone. Now, growing up, I lived in Douglas Village Apartments. Um, I remember when they come in with buses and helicopters and raided the place. And it brought an element, it gave the north side a, a stigma. But I don't particularly know what the future holds, but I can tell you that I understand what I've experienced in the past ten years. And that is, once this, if it was to be approved and it was built, it will be sold, and corporate will give them enough money to buy it out, and it'll be, it'll bring back what we've worked so hard to get rid of. The, uh, this is the same pictures that we see at Timber Ridge. Units they built at Timber Ridge, they're identical. Avalon has, has, uh, got its own issues up there. And the ridge, the, the reserve has its own asset of the narcotics and the different things that are going there, and Chief and his group are doing a great job. I take nothing from them, our public safety is second to none in Douglas County, thank you, Chief Sparks. But we don't, as a community, we do not want this. We want, if anything, we want single-family homes. And for somebody to tell me that they'll sell one of those for two-hundred-and-ninety thousand, or low, three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, I own a home with a half an acre, three-bedroom, four-bathroom, full basement, two-car garage, immaculate. And I could, and, and the best offer I got was two-seventy-five. So I feel it's, it's a farce. It's, it's untrue that they could, they're gonna bring that type of quality, and we talked about quality of growth to the, to, to this. And the, and the entrance coming into Holburn, Holburn Lane, the emergency entrance there, um, that's not a good situation either, and I thank you for recognizing that. I sat down and talked to them, and we agreed to disagree. It's a fine for somewhere else, but it's not for us. I appreciate you guys taking us into consideration, you know, and, and we voted you in, and we want everything that you guys got to offer, and we're pulling on you, everybody can't do what you do. And I wanna thank you for taking this community that we're so hard trying to become even the more. I didn't move away from this community, I stayed right here. We work with the youth, we work with the widows and widowers. We opened a foundation just for the work on the north side with these people, with these young people. We're housing them, we're feeding them, we're doing what we supposed to do, but we do not want this in our backyard. Just today, with all the trees that are up there, we still, the runoff is so bad coming up off the top of that hill that on Holburn Lane, everybody that's on the north side, we have built dams across our driveways.
Dr. John Rogers, that is your time, thank you so much.
So, long story short is, we don't, we don't want this.
Thank you.
Have a blessed day.
You as well. Good evening, Mr. Harris, if you'll please give us your name and address for the record.
Um, my name is Mr. Kelvin Harris, six-six-three-seven Copper Court, Douglasville, three-zero-one-three-four. First of all, I wanna thank Ma- you mayor and council members for making statements. I just wanna say something about Avalon Community. Uh, I'm one of the original homeowners. I know you have seen me come here many times complaining about us getting stepped over, bamboozled. I gotta give you credit where credit due, you see our concerns. I listen at you, Mayor, Mr. Miller, I listen at you, I listen at LaShawn. But you gotta understand two things, Malone is a two-way street. And if you're gonna box us in like that, then you asking for trouble. The presentation I listened at, I was confused. It went from a hundred-and-eighty-one units to one sixty-four to one sixty-nine. I listened at the amendments he had, said that they was gonna do. We just spent twenty-five million dollars right here. You can't beat it nowhere else. That's another problem I have with that build. Because you're billing something, we got it right here. You gonna look at crime? The units that we got on ninety-two, the contractor bamboozled us. I don't want that to happen again, I really don't. We got a stories, two levels. We had another story that was supposed to be, the contractor be- he bailed out of it. All I'm asking y'all to do is continue to do the job that you're doing that make taxpayers, current taxpayer, happy. Thank you, and I oppose.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Folks, did we have anyone else who wanted to speak in opposition of this?
I wasn't gonna say anything. But I have to. Uh, my name is Andreen Barrett, and my mom, and we're at seventy-four thirty-five Hunter's Ridge Drive in Douglasville. My mom bought her house in ninety-three, so I've seen Douglasville change tremendously. And then I just wanna thank you, Madam Mayor, because I've seen you make tremendous things happen here, and you guys all together has, have been wonderful. We live, my mom, we are at the corner of Hunter's Ridge and Holburn. I walk that street for my little exercise, and it's nice and quiet and everything. Um, we have a lot of renters in the neighborhood, just like Pastor Rogers said. And a lot of times, because we're on the corner, these renters that don't respect homeowners, they'll walk through our backyard, they'll walk around our dri- on our property to get to the next street. Now, could you imagine if a whole community was over there doing that, just disrespecting the neighborhood? And, now I'm here taking care of my mom now because she's eighty-seven, but if she was by herself and all these new people in the neighborhood, you know what I'm saying, walking through and disrespecting the homeowners, that wouldn't be too good. So I am glad that you guys are not totally in concurrence with this new project, and I hope that, um, you see that the homeowners that have been there for thirty-plus years, even though, you know, we got a lot of renters now, they're very important to the stability of this community. And I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Folks, I think we have a few minutes left, if there was anyone else who wanted to speak in opposition of this item. And, and you can give Ms. Allen your slip, you can give it after if it's easier.
It's your dance card. Good evening, um, wanna thank everybody for what you do and what you are doing. I'm thankful to hear the concerns.
Give us your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gail Rouse, sixty-four oh-four Hunter's Ridge. Um, I live in Hunter's Ridge, sixty-four oh-four Cardiff Lane. I wanted to thank you all for what you do, and I wanna thank you for your concerns. It's amazing how some of the things that I hear you all say and some of my neighbors say are the exact same things, and we've not communicated, maybe a little bit, they have the same concerns with this particular development they wanna put in. This does not benefit us, it does not benefit the area. As it has been stated before, if you wanna put in some homes, some single-family homes with a better, a little bit more price range, then yes, that may benefit us. Also, if this goes further and if there is more meetings with the community, I would like to know how they invite the community. I've been at every meeting, I was not invited to this meeting that they just had. I know several other, at least seven other members of the community, they've not been invited to the meetings. So I'm just kinda concerned about who they're meeting with. They're meeting with good people, but I just wanted, I think we can have better representation if they just kinda communicate with the entire community. Basically, that's it, cause it doesn't benefit us. How would the school handle it? I know we brought that up before, I don't think it was ever addressed, how would that particular, I think there's an elementary school or middle school that sits right up above off of ninety-two, how would that handle? That many more kids coming in, cause I think they're already in trailers. That's another one of my concerns, and also with the safety, that's already been mentioned. So that's it, I oppose strongly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gail. Okay, was there anyone else who wanted to speak in opposition of this item? Going once, going twice, folks, this public hearing is closed. Feels like an infomercial though, because wait, there's more. The next item is item number twenty-five dash two-three-five. Also tabled from June second, says to hold a public hearing and consider a request to, or consider a petition to annex thirteen-point-six-nine acres at the northeast intersection of Malone Road. of Malone Road and Linecrest Drive in Land Lot six forty-six, District eighteen, Section two, parcel IDs zero-zero-zero-one, zero-zero-zero-two, zero-zero-zero-three, and Land Lot seven-zero-three, District one, Section three, parcel ID zero-zero-zero-six. Application by the Malfris Group in care of Mason Malfris. And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Good evening again. This is an annexation request of four parcels which are in Douglas County, to bring them into the city, to join with the city parcels to create this development. And that concludes.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Gray. Okay. I did not have any more questions about this from you at this time. Council, do you guys have questions of Mr. Gray before the applicant comes down?
I did.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Ma'am, thank you. Mr. Gray, how many total acres? Is it twenty-one?
I don't have it pulled up.
There's twenty-one is in the county, and thirteen's in the city.
No, I think the total is twenty-one.
The total was twenty-one.
The total is twenty-one. Yes, Madam Mayor. Total of twenty-one acres. And then thirteen of that being in the county.
In the county.
At this time.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is that all of Mr. Gray right now? Okay. Would the applicant like to come down and go over this with us? Is that, I don't know. Is the applicant still here?
Yeah.
Ah. It's all right. I got caught up like that a few minutes ago.
Mason Malfris, fifty Judge Island Drive, Euphoric, South Carolina. I don't have an additional presentation for this. I did want to, I did want to clarify one thing, because I, we were talking a little bit about why the county, why the city. I did want to try to clarify, so I fully understood your question, because I was struggling to understand, because the city is the portion that is on Malone Road there, and so to develop in the county, we have no access to, rather than Holburn Lane, which we, of course, would not develop strictly on the county's portion, and only have Holburn Lane as our access in and out. So that, that's why.
Thank you for that. Okay.
Thank y'all.
Did that help, Madam Mayor?
It did.
Okay.
And you didn't want to build on Holburn Lane to build a, you wouldn't have to do a lot of traffic studies and doing streets and rerouting and all that?
Oh, to, for it to go through Holburn Lane?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, no, ma'am. No, that was never in consideration.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
You answered my question. I don't know if anyone else had questions about the annexation portion.
I'm sorry, what was that, Madam Mayor? We've got multiple conversations.
I apologize. This is a, the county does oppose this annexation.
Yes.
Yes. And so, not to get into all the details of that, but a lot of times we do ask that if the county, we've had annexations before where the county did not oppose. There was one, not very long ago, on Doris Road, but they dropped the opposition because it was less dense than the city. So, but the county does oppose this, this annexation.
Correct.
Just yes or no? Okay. Thanks.
Yes. And just to clarify, I know that we don't have the information tonight, but we will by Monday, as far as the answers from WSA, of course, our lovely police chief is here tonight, but schools and fire as well, they always have a seat at the table through the development meetings, and we would never move forward without their input on those items. So that might help clarify a little bit as well. I'm so sorry, but from my own understanding, because I'm getting conflicting information, so we...
Well, the zoning procedures act doesn't apply to annexations.
Okay.
You have a public hearing, but there's no right of the public to comment on the annexation.
Okay. It does say that we were doing it on the, on the agenda, I would like to, if that's okay, and then going forward.
It's not required.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. And then just to clarify then, because I guess the Georgia zoning act does not require that we have an open hearing on this meeting, but I know I was under the impression that we're going to, and I think I led y'all to that, so we're gonna go ahead and do that tonight. But keep in mind that Monday night, there will not be an open hearing. So if you've not spoken yet, and you had something that you wanted, a question or statement, then now is your time. So at this time, we're gonna go ahead and have that public hearing. We will do twenty minutes for those in favor of this item, at five minutes apiece, and something tells me that nobody wants to do that, so we'll close that.
Madam Chair, can I, can I have a question before the community comes?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
You come on, Dr. Rogers. On this historical information background, it does have something from Douglas County School System, and it says the original pre-application request was for a hundred-and-fifty-two units, and then it goes down from, and that was in April, and then it rose from a hundred-and-fifty-two to one-eighty-one. So it's like Mr. Harris said, that's a little bit confusing in that...
Right.
It was one-fifty-two, then it's one-eighty-one, then it's one-sixty-four, one-sixty-nine. So...
Yes, ma'am.
If we were to consider even what the school system is saying, they were looking at it even for comments on a hundred-and-fifty-two units.
Well, I think that the, the application was just, there were some changes made to it, I believe it was late last week.
Okay.
And so I think that we're still waiting on some of those answers to come back, but we will have those before Monday.
Before Monday.
Before we make a decision, we will have those answers.
All right.
With, with them taken into good consideration, the new numbers.
Yes, ma'am. So are, is the school system in the fire department making a comment, or in the police department, based on which numbers? One-fifty-two, one-eighty-one, one-sixty-nine?
The one-sixty-nine. What's being proposed here?
Tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. I apologize, Dr. Rogers.
I'm so sorry. Dr. Rogers, you're up.
Dr. John Rogers, sixty-three thirty Holburn Lane, Douglasville, Georgia, three-zero-one-three-four. My question is, the county filed suit against the city pertaining to this, correct?
We can't answer those right now.
Present litigation.
But I didn't know how you can make decisions on something where there's litigation going on in that. And I know that it hasn't been settled at this time, so I was just wondering. The other thing is, is that the, the particular discussion that was had, taking place, was that the emergency exit or entrance that come out of Holburn Lane would be only grass, and for, it wouldn't be a paved, yeah, it wouldn't be a paved entrance, an emergency paved entrance, it would just be a, a grass facade that they would use to come in and out, and that was odd to me. So, that's, that's where I was at on that. I was just wondering, so we'll see where this goes from here.
Thank you.
Have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. You as well. Was there anyone else who's not spoken yet that would like to speak before we close this portion of the public hearing? Okay. Okay? Well, with that being said, then, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Madam Mayor, I know you're...
I know. I know. Always guess.
Yes, ma'am.
Fire Chief, Dr. Allen, do you mind coming forward? I just want to have this question, so we'll, we'll have the answer for the future on what the requirements are for an emergency entrance, whether it's paved, or grass, or impervious. I know fire trucks, they're very heavy, and the cans for the ambulance.
Madam Mayor, I'm looking at it right here as paved. It's red.
It's paved? Okay. Okay, so I'll leave that alone. But if you can just answer, the question was raised by the chairwoman about security and what that mechanism would be, are there certain requirements that the fire department has? Or like, because if it's a lock or a key, and you don't have the key, and something's going on, you got to get through there, how does that work? For the future, just?
So, so normally, when we look at, when we look at security areas that have gates, we require them to have some type of SOS system on there, so our sirens, our lights would automatically have the gates open up for us.
Okay. So is, is something electronic?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's a, it's a deliver, a service? What's the SOS? What's the, what's that acronym?
It's, it's siren over something, and I don't want to, I don't want to be, be incorrect in this form here, but basically, when we pull up to a gated community, we would activate our sirens and our lights, and the certain tones that come from the sirens would activate the gates to open up.
To unlock automatically.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, just wondering, because you can't come in my backyard unless you've got the key to the fence.
And these will have to be electronic gates.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Archie.
And to the, to the paved situation, we would prefer all entrances to be hard-surfaced because of the weight of the vehicles that are, that are coming through the, through the community.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Actually, Chief, Ellen, I believe Coach has a question for you.
Oh, Archie.
I'm sorry. While you're here.
No worries.
Chief, how, how many of these type emergency entrances exist, or you got a rough number, if any, around Douglasville and Douglas County?
There are several, several, and when we're talking, we're talking either apartment complexes and/or, and/or subdivisions that are gated communities, and including commercial buildings and, and businesses.
I'm wondering, looking at the, the map for this, and where it's located at the back of the subdivision, where the main entrance is off Malone Road, which is more of a main road, rather than cutting through a subdivision, if y'all are answering a call, what would determine y'all using the emergency exit as opposed to just coming through the main entrance, if there was an emergency call in that, in this subdivision we're talking about?
And through, through the development process, we don't normally look at something as an emergency exit or anything, so we, when we respond to any type of community, we would, through our mapping process and GIS, we would look at the most advantageous way of getting into that community.
Okay. I mean, just off the top of my head, I'm thinking, cutting through a, cutting through a subdivision or coming off a main road, just makes sense to me, but I know there's more to making that decision than just what I'm thinking. So I, I just was curious about that. What determines that?
Yes, sir. And, and don't, don't limit it just to, and, and Chief Sparks can attest to this, don't just limit it to just fire. It's, it's public safety in general, so...
Right.
You're not just looking at just fire emergencies or EMS, but also law enforcement.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
No worries.
Thanks.
I'm so sorry. I think that Mayor Protim has a question.
Yeah, I just want to follow up to Councilman Watts' question regarding those emergency access points. Are they, are they tested on a regular basis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just like a fire alarm, just a fire...
Yes, sir.
For sprinkler system, they do that?
Yes, the Fire Marshal's Office tests all gated communities that have electronic gates on an annual basis.
Annual, okay. Does it figure, some of them, if they're battery-operated, that could be a potential problem?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up to answer those questions on the fly for us. Appreciate it.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, do you guys have other questions of the applicant, or just of us?
Yes, ma'am. I have one more, and I apologize, I had all my notes, and I was trying to...
Good. For the applicant, though?
Yes, for the applicant. If you don't mind.
Mr. Malfris, can I get you to come back down for a moment?
I apologize. I had, I was trying to write everything that, that you said, and all that came, and the citizens as well. The mailboxes, I overlooked that. I had a little picture, and I forgot to point at that picture. So what is the rationale behind having, I lived in an apartment in Maryland, and all the mailboxes were together. It was kind of, I'm not gonna say chaotic, but why wouldn't you have a mailbox in front of the townhome? Why is it like an apartment where all the mailboxes are together?
Once again, maybe one that my engineer could answer a little bit better, but, but from our belief, it, it's from the, the way the mail would have to come in and out of the community, rather than, than one area, and, and potentially just how many that would be on a, on a twenty-foot unit.
Okay. And because when, recalling when I lived in an apartment, there's only, you know, that mailbox is like a communal mailbox, and that, and that's how it would be. It's not, is it the same size as a regular mailbox, like at your home? It's, it was very small, so you couldn't get a lot of stuff in there, and then you couldn't, like now, you can go to your mailbox and put the flag up, and the post person, the mail carrier will take something to you to the post office, but you can't do that in a communal mail area.
I'm sure that's something we're open to.
Okay.
The, the way that that is best done, and suggestions from council, we would be open to.
Yeah, and I mean, I think it'd make you feel more like if you've, especially if you've purchased a townhome, to make it feel like a home, if you have your own mailbox with your address.
Madam Mayor, I'm being told that the post office requires it for these types of developments.
Oh, okay. So that's what it is, because it's multi-family, that the post office requires that.
I'm gonna have to follow up with you to get the exact rationale behind it.
But if that, if that's the, that's the answer, that's the answer. I just didn't know. I didn't, I mean, I just...
No, no, it's okay.
Thought like townhomes would have their own mailbox, like a, like a house, and not an apartment. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? No. Mr. Malfris, before you leave, I, I know that we only have a few days before you come back on Monday, but I've got to share with you that there's, like I said, there's five different photos at the top of these renderings, and they're, they're mostly ugly. There's not a lot of character to them, but most importantly, I have a real issue with a single-car garage with this amount of density on a road like that. That's something that I really would need to see addressed, as lo, as well as some kind of conditioning in the HOA that would require a rental cap. And for those listening, that rental cap means that the HOA would not allow more than a certain number of rental units in the development. And I think that's my only suggestions at this time.
Yeah. And, and we're open to looking at that, and we appreciate the feedback from y'all. That's really definitely what we're looking at, is looking for, is the constructive comments back. I would say, too, that those are examples, and we would adhere to architectural guidelines that y'all would put on us. Those are just examples of what that product looks like being utilized around.
Okay.
And we don't think it's ugly.
I'm sorry. Okay.
All good?
I think so. Anyone else question for the applicant? Okay, that is it. Thank you so much, Mr. Malfris. Madam Mayor, that is all that I have this evening for planning and development.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I will not trouble you with going to your next committee, because there isn't any business under Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, so, or, nor are there any comments or concerns or any business under Councilman Davis's Public Relations Committee. So the next committee is Public Safety, Dr. Burdenley, thank you, and she is, has left the meeting, and there's no business under that committee, but since Councilman Watts is here, I'll ask you to address Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, Coach. Councilmember Hudson, would you please take Technology Committee, as you're the chairperson there?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mayor Protim, the Vice Chair of Transportation Committee, would you mind taking that committee for me, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item under the Transportation Committee at this time.
Yes, sir.
That is to adopt a resolution to rename Elm Street in the city of Douglasville to become Page Street in honor of Mrs. Martha Page. And Ms. Hampton, you have some follow-up on that?
You all discussed this item a month or so ago. Ms. Jordan has worked with Councilman Davis, who originally made the request, so we are prepared to have that resolution adopted on Monday, and Councilman Davis will be back in town on Monday, and has mentioned that. I guess he's mentioned he has the whole family coming on Monday.
Do we, I guess we want to leave it on the agenda, if the family's gonna be present, then?
The family's coming with us.
Take, we'll talk, then we will take that up and vote on it on Monday then. Any, any comments or question, Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Protim. Just to say that the renaming of the street for Mrs. Page, she's a hundred and two years old. She's lived in the community many years and has generations of family there. And so, we'll read over all her accommodations and why we have considered naming the street for her. We usually try to wait until posthumously, is that the name of the word? Posthumously. But we have made an exception in this, in this regard. But Councilmember Davis made the request, well, I think there are only four homes on her street. Is that correct, Ms. Chief? Three? Three names, three homes on the street. And so, he'll bring all that information to us with her family and again, her accommodations when she comes with her family on Monday. So, she was born in nineteen twenty-three. That's a long time. I know. But thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll, can't be certain how, certain how the vote will come out, but we'll whip the vote and see if we, what we can get on that on Monday.
Yes, sir.
That is all we have under the Transportation Committee at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protim, for taking that item up. Is there any other business that come before council tonight from the elected officials? All right. Thank you all so much. Updates from our city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dodson. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Dodson. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our chief of police, Dr. Gary Sparks.
No business, Madam Mayor.
All right. Chief, you're getting ready for the Kalia Awards. You're going to tell the people what that's about. You want to brag on yourself? You want me to toot the horn? We getting our national certification? How long have we been doing it? You were already the chief of the year for the state and the department, and now we're going to Little Rock, Arkansas for a national certification. You want to tell us what that involves and the percentage of?
It involves a whole long process of other law enforcement agencies throughout the nation coming to the city of Douglasville to look over our standard operating procedures to make sure that we were doing things in line with the Kalia in order to receive this Kalia certification. So, we're in line with most national police departments that, that can put this emblem on their vehicles and, and it'll show that they're Kalia certified. So, we are already state-certified.
Yes, sir.
So, now we are nationally, we'll be picking up that hardware for national certification.
And it's twenty percent city manager or how many law enforcement agencies in the, in the country?
Yeah, it's probably around that or maybe less.
Less. Fifteen to twenty percent of all agencies.
It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. And you, the, the good thing about it is that all our officers and everybody assigned with the police department, they have to adhere to these policies. And they come and they check and make sure that you're just not verbally saying that. They want to see you doing it.
Yes, sir. So, three years?
And then we have to go back and.
Yes.
And they'll come back and check us again.
Okay. Congratulations.
We ready to be checked?
I know. That's right. And Hollis Street, when is the Hollis Street gathering, community gathering? Do you know? It's the barbecue.
I think it's going to be when we're out at Little Rock.
Yes, but, but we'll still have that. It's an annual event on Hollis Street. Yes, sir. So, it'll be, I know it's on our social medias, but we'll make certain that we advertise and invite the community to Hollis Street.
Remember something. We do have our Justice and Accountability Meeting. Hollis Street is August the twenty-third. August the twenty-third is our Hollis Street.
Okay. We'll be back.
Okay. So, the next weekend, we're starting Youth Against Violence. But we'll have our Justice and, uh, Justice Meeting at the Police Department. So, if you want to come by, community come by, we'll be talking about justice and integrity base. Yes.
Ten P, ten AM on Saturday, next Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll start the justice thing at eleven, because what I'm going to do is bring the kids from Youth Against Violence over to the Justice and Accountability.
Okay.
So, they'll understand what we, what we're talking about. Law enforcement is about justice. It's about being accountable for our actions.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, Chief. I'm putting you on the spot, but thank you so much. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Just to follow up on Councilmember Miller's comment on the cluster mailboxes, so pushed by the post office, but cost-saving measures for drivers.
For dri, oh, for the post?
For the post office. So, that's why they've done that.
So, in this multi-family, they will require?
It's not just multi-family.
Oh.
It's also, yes, for neighborhoods. So, it's not just multi-family. So, you may see more in that area. Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So, that's the answer, to address that question. And then the other is just to let you all know, Monday, we do have committee meetings that start at four PM. We'll see you at the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah.
Old location.
Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah. At four. See you there.
Thank you, city manager. Now is the time for comments and from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us about any business, remain to the city of Douglasville. Please come to the microphone. You can give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to myself and councilmembers. Councilman Davis not here. He'll say, no takers. Okay. Thank you all so much for your attendance. If we don't have any other business that come before council tonight, this meeting is adjourned.